Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for the week of March 24th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watched live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at citymls.net. Join District 3 council members Cinda Raider and Mayor Pro Tem Bethel Lopez for a town hall on April 3rd at the training facility at the Lee Summit Police Department, located at 10 Northeast Tudor Road. Receive an update on major projects and visit with department representatives. This is an open forum. Unable to attend, the meeting will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. The city's Wellness Commission is promoting healthy habits with March being National Nutrition Month. Keep an eye out on our Facebook page for helpful tips and tricks to lead a nutritious lifestyle. And stay safe and informed with LS Aware. The city's free alert system designed to keep residents and businesses informed of emergencies, such as weather events, road closures, and certain non-emergency events. The city can quickly send messages via phone, text, or email depending on the preferences set up by the user. Users choose how to be notified and what information they wish to receive. Sign up at lsaware.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Officers en route, night 14, armed drunk.
Have you ever been driving around Lee Summit and wondered, "What's that going to be? What's being built there?" Wow, that went up fast. The Development Minute is here to help, highlighting some of the newest projects in Lee Summit, Missouri. Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen is coming to the former Lion's Choice at Summit Orchards. The fast food chain known for its fried chicken and spicy chicken sandwiches is scheduled to open in early 2025. Local authentic Mexican restaurant El Toro Loco is coming to Summit Woods Crossing Shopping Center. The restaurant will occupy the former On the Border location and offer dishes like street tacos, enchiladas, and fajitas. El Toro Loco will be opening in early 2025. Fua Noodle Go had a soft opening where the former Pepper Jack's Grill was located in Summit Woods Crossing. The establishment is currently serving a selection of Fua noodle soups, appetizers, and daily specials. Fua Noodle Go will fully open in 2025. The Quick Trip located at 1001 Southwest Blue Parkway has begun its redevelopment. The squeaky clean car wash is being demolished to accommodate a new 5,300 square foot QT building and a planned phase rebuild. The current location will remain open during construction. The new QT will open in 2025. Discovery Park, the 3.9 million square foot mixed-use project located off of Northwest Colburn Road and Northeast Douglas Street is underway and its first phase, The Village, is being graded. Town Place Suites Hotel by Marriott will be one of the first builds coming to The Village. The hotel will feature spacious rooms with amenities including full kitchens. That's it for the Development Minute. For more about upcoming projects, visit cityofls.net.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself.
If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
It's extremely rewarding overall, just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work. In many cases, leaving the city for employment. And went through a leadership class through the chamber. Learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have. And was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on city council. And so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my involvement on city council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters, and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it. And to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with metropolitan community colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters and they're all fairly active in some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails. I love riding my bike and I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible talented residents that come from all different walks of life. You know, very diverse group of families in our community that it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that you get, in many cases, you get out of it more than you put in. And I truly live by that and I believe that.
Good evening. I'm calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, March 27th, 2025. Can I get a roll call vote, please? I mean, attendance?
Mark Kitchens. Sherri Fraser.
Present.
Jake Lovelace.
Present.
Dana Arth.
Present.
Terry Trafton.
Present.
Tanya Johniford. Chip Tuzinski.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote on that, please?
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, so we have public comments time right now. If anyone has any public comments pertaining to the business of the Planning Commission in general, not related to anything being presented tonight, now is your time. I see none. So I would like to get a motion for the approval of the consent. Well, let me read the approval of the consent agenda. We have item TMP-3283, application PL2024-308. Final plat Kobe Creek, second plat lots 31 through 91, 160 through 184, 297, and tracks A, B, C, F, I, K, L, M, N, and O. Clayton Properties Group, DBA, Summit Homes applicant. And then we have item B, which is the approval of the March 13th, 2025 Planning Commission action letter. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote?
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, we will move on to the public hearing part of the meeting. We have application PL2025-019, rezoning from R1 to TNZ and preliminary development plan, 100 Northeast Douglas Street Engineering Solutions LLC applicant. If anyone who is planning to give testimony or speak on behalf of this application would stand up and be sworn in, now is the time. All right.
Ready?
We are ready.
Afternoon. Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. With me this evening, I have the architect as well as the owner that is proposing this. Generally located near the First Baptist Church, just down the way on Douglas Street. So it's the northwest corner of Maple and Douglas. The Ignite Plan shows this in the Downtown Activity Center. The Downtown Activity Center then has a number of kind of rings and ideas of walkabilities and ideas of trying to create a mixture of uses while maintaining the historic nature of the residential areas downtown. And so you can kind of see on the orange dot, the location of our site within kind of the closer proximity ring to the downtown area. Currently, the site is zoned R1 NSO, so it's a neighborhood overlay district. And we're proposing to take it over to a TNZ zoning. And so what you can see is a mixture of zoning types kind of along that Douglas corridor, a mixture of uses of houses that have been converted into commercial uses, a mixture of rentals, RP2, R1s, and a mixture of just different types of residential housing. So as the idea was, is that we started looking through the R1 NSO district is for, as it states, neighborhood stabilization. So trying to allow someone building a new home to maintain the older character of the downtown core. And so in the event that we're going to leave the entire project, essentially the existing building as it sits, the only thing we're going to do is modify the back deck on the backside of it to build a better deck facility and build a parking lot. The TNZ zoning district, which allows for a planned transitional neighborhood district, to allow some of that transition from the residential to the commercial. And again, kind of as we go down that corridor of Douglas, it seemed to fit. So our proposal is, on the right side of your page would be Douglas, on the south side would be Maple, so to the bottom of your page would be the First Baptist Church. The existing home sits facing Douglas Street with an existing drive that will be maintained off of Douglas, going back to a little detached garage. And then the proposal is off of Maple to provide an eight-stall parking area on the backside. And then, as I said, we're going to rebuild the deck. And the purpose of rebuilding the deck is we're going to provide an ADA lift off of the parking lot here so that the person parking in the lot can get up to the deck area and then rebuilding the stairs going back out towards the drive area. Our landscape plan then shows some of the trees when Douglas gets widened and improved will be removed on the front. So we've installed some new trees along the perimeter and bushes and shrubs then along the parking lot to shield any of our impact to the neighbors, as well as a detention facility that will serve the parking lot and the added impervious area for the site. Here's an elevation view of the site. So this would be looking from Maple onto the site. And you can see the deck addition that will be taking off the existing and then essentially just rebuilding the new deck facility basically on the backside. So this would be from the, Douglas would be on the front side of that picture looking forward of it, that side of it. We did hold a neighborhood meeting back in February. No one attended. And so we are here for any questions. And like I said, the architect and the owner are here to answer any other question you may have.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation from Ms. Bright?
Good evening. Adair Bright, Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 15.
Exhibit A, 1 through 15 noted and entered into the record.
So the applicant is requesting rezoning from R1 NSO to our TNZ, so that's our residential one, to our, and our neighborhood stabilization overlay to our transitional neighborhood zone. They are also requesting approval of a preliminary development plan to allow for the conversion of the existing single-family home into an office. The property is located at 100 Northeast Douglas, which is the northwest corner of Northeast Douglas and Northeast Maple Streets. And then they are also proposing a new parking lot and the renovation of the existing deck. So as mentioned, the property is currently zoned R1 NSO. The adjacent zonings consist of our PO, which is our planned office district, and other R1 NSO, which are used as single-family residential. So our transitional neighborhood zone, the intent is to be used as a transition from that central business district to residential uses by utilizing residential structures to house low-intensity commercial or office uses. You can see it on the map in the kind of pinkish-purple color surrounding that CBD zone. So the property is within the Downtown Activity Center. And within that Activity Center, offices are stated as complementary uses. This project would support the Ignite Comprehensive Plan through the Resilient Economy Focus area, which would increase business retention and grow business activity by allowing the property to be reutilized. For our project and site information, much of it is existing and some of it is legal nonconforming, such as the setbacks, which far exceed what is required within the TNZ. But they are proposing the addition of the parking lot with seven stalls and one ADA stall. And yeah, just reusing the existing structure. Phonometrics not required at this time, but the TNZ does restrict any lighting to be pedestrian scale and compatible with the residential uses. The existing structure was constructed around 1902 and is proposed to remain. It has white siding and a wraparound porch. The applicant is proposing the deck renovation on the rear, which is the west side. And the materials will be compatible with residential-type material and uses. And also the addition of the ADA compliant lift. As mentioned, they are proposing preservation of any existing landscaping with the exception of that which would be within the parking lot or the detention basin. And is also proposing additional shrubs and evergreens along that western boundary of that parking lot to help shield any headlights or anything from the cars in that area. The neighborhood meeting was held on February 17th with zero people attending, with that notification area being our standard 300 feet. One email was received asking for details about the request, which we had provided. So with the conditions of approval outlined here and in the staff letter, the application meets the goals of the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and the requirements of the UDO. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments on this application? All right, I guess we have none. So we'll go to, oh, I'm sorry. Did you get sworn in? Okay. Come to the microphone and state your name and address, please. We've allotted three minutes for public comments, so.
Carol Matthews, 1 Northeast Douglas. The reason for myself and about dozen people that have, that I've heard from that we are just now bringing these comments is that we apparently aren't in the area that would receive notification of an upcoming change. So that's the reason it's just now coming to you. I believe February 17th was on or about the time there was a storm coming, a blizzard coming in, so. But we are, I checked this morning and we are outside the 300-foot radius even though we're a block away. So I will, if you wonder why I'm just now bringing this up, or we, our group is bringing it up. I would call your attention to this zoning map that was shown before. One of the things that are, some of us are concerned about is that with a TNZ, the neighborhood stabilization will go away. So all the work that previous city employees and officials and everyone has done to stabilize the historic areas around downtown would be nonexistent right there. And I don't know if you can see this, and if you zoom out. I got you a copy. This is similar to, thank you. This is similar to, I got this off the web, but it's similar to what I've gotten here. This area north, do you want me to do this? This. North of downtown and south of downtown and west of downtown are blessed with having the neighborhood stabilization in place. This piecemeal area right here is in this area that is, is being requested to be rezoned. The reason that it's like this is because before all the wonderful work was done to stabilize historic neighborhoods, people tore down historic structures. stabilize historic neighborhoods, people tore down historic structures. Our concern is that, not so much that what is being proposed is by itself terrible, but that it would start by rezoning and, and parking, more parking lots and so forth, start a series of debilitating situations, which would increase and, and make this fragmented area worse. The city, the historic areas that were established further north on Douglas, the historic areas on Green Street and the historic areas west, were, were able to be historic areas because there were contiguous structures. There's no contiguous structures, and any rezoning and change, we feel would contribute to a further, further deterioration.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. We'll get answers for you. So before we start with questions from the commission, does someone from city want to address Ms. Matthews' concerns on that?
All right. So I can speak to the Neighborhood Stabilization Overlay District. That is a district or an overlay that does, it only applies to R1, so none of the other zoning districts. It does deal with infill properties. It does help. The, the main idea of that is if there is a new construction or rebuild or expansions of existing structures, it deals mainly with the bulk sizing and massing of new structures. So someone could come in and purchase this house today and tear it down. There's no, nothing to stop that. And then rebuild a new house in that R1 zoning district as long as they meet those neighborhood stabilization overlay characteristics. By rezoning to a TNZ, that actually gives us a little bit more control over the structure, that the structure must remain as a residential home, whether it's used for a commercial or residential purpose. So the idea of the TNZ is to create that softer transition from the office or CBD into the neighborhood. So is there, what are their questions? Were there clarifications?
Anybody on the commission have a follow-up to Shannon?
Yes. One of the slides said that the TNZ zoning required that the, the structure to be compatible with the surrounding structures. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Let me see if I can get that pulled back up. Yay. So our code does state verbatim, let's see, where does that? This district is identified as one in which the physical character and design of existing and proposed new structures play an important role in assuring compatibility with existing or planned residential development. And then later on, under the Building and Design Character section, it says existing and new buildings are expected to reflect the residential character of building design and be compatible with adjacent residential-style properties.
So if I'm interpreting that correctly, by actually changing the zoning to the TNZ, we're actually getting more protections as far as keeping the historical content of this home in place rather than where we're at right now? Is that correct?
Yes, because currently, as Shannon stated, somebody could come in and-
Come in and bulldoze it, but this will give us some protections, help preserve that environment.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I can share.
Okay, so I guess we can start down here with any, do you have a question about this or just? Okay, great.
So I just want to clarify, so that some, this TNZ, TNZ would give us more protection, but someone could still come in, purchase the property, and bulldoze it. But if they purchase it, bulldoze it, and rebuild, it still has to, or would it have to mirror what the historical-
Under which zoning district? Under the TNZ-
Yes.
-as being proposed? So currently, under the R1 NSO, as Shannon had mentioned, the only requirements within the NSO are to be compatible with massing and scale, not necessarily architectural style, whereas the TNZ does build in that language that it does have to be compatible with adjacent residential uses as far as architectural style.
Go ahead, Mr. Traptan.
So if this changes to TNZ and the owner sells the property in the future, and they want to convert it back to a residential home, is that possible under this?
They would have to rezone it back. No, they are allowed within this zoning district, residential.
A residential use in a TNZ is allowed? So they could, it could become a residence again in the future? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Chair, thank you. I, I have a question for Public Works. I know there's a project along Douglas that's going on here, and I know Mr. Schlitz brought that up. But do we know if there's going to be any future needs of easements or any additional right-of-way or anything that could come as, at a cost to the city where we could just include that as part of the approval of this, that any included temporary construction easements are ever, are as part of, are included in this zoning as opposed to have future costs to the city down the road?
We did have the project manager for the Douglas project on a call with the applicant when they first brought this forward, and she was able to explain the project and what we might need from them. I don't remember the details of whether or not we were getting easements from them, but we did have that meeting, and so they are aware of any needs that they will need to provide any sort of right-of-way.
Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, there's no extra right-of-way needed, but there will be an easement upon the northeast corner, so Douglas and Maple, and, you know, we've agreed that'll happen when we plat the property. So it's kind of our next step is if the rezoning PDP is approved, we'll replat this into a single lot, and at that point then we'll issue that easement.
Then we'll show the easement on top of that with that no-cost additional to the city.
Correct.
All right. Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right. So if you have additional questions, I'll just go down the way here. Want to start, Mr. Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This would be for the applicant. Whoever's representing him, Mr. Schlitz?
We'll see what I can answer.
All right. We'll start off with an easy one. What type of business is this?
I'll give that to the owner. He can come describe it exactly. Hold, please.
I own a company. It's a financial services and investment management. So closer, sorry.
Name and address?
David Thompson, 368 South Shore Drive, Lake Winnabeckle, Missouri, 64034. I'm the owner, sole owner, my wife and I. Financial services, investment management. We're a very small firm. My wife works for me. I have a partner and one assistant. So it's a small space, so it works good for us.
While you're up here, a couple of additional questions?
Yes, sir.
Follow-up. Business hours, what are you looking at?
Usually, we're not open before 8:30, and usually we're done by 5:00. We don't work on the weekends, so it's very much kind of banker's hours.
Do you plan on having any, I don't know, gatherings for employees, for clients in, in the evenings or on any weekends? That would be a consideration?
No, we're very quiet people. So we've never done anything like that before, so I wouldn't see that ever being, being an issue. It's more just for operational space and occasional client meetings, which are usually a couple a day. So it's not going to be a high-traffic area. And one thing I would mention is this is an as-is application. The intent is to keep the, the aesthetics of the original structure. So a lot of people are like, okay, what's your intention? And that's not really in the application. But it's a cool old house. We have the original homestead plat from when it was homesteaded in like 1855 or something, and it's signed by the president. It's a cool, a cool house. It's located in Lee Summit, and I think by doing this, it gives us the ability to put resources in it and maintain it. If there's concern about the property, I would say that's probably not an issue, but if there's concern about using it as commercial, it's as light a commercial as I can probably muster because of the way we're using it, if that makes sense. Hopefully, that helps you understand.
Yes, thank you. And then follow-up, materials of the deck. What are we looking at for the decking material? Since this is, you've, you've stated this is going to be an ADA-accessible deck.
Yes, Roger Webb, Collins Webb Architecture, excuse me, 307B Southwest Market Street and Lee Summit. We're showing the deck as wood, just typical dimensional kind of wood cedar.
Five-quarter board cedar?
Yeah, that's what we're showing it right now. Yep, yep.
Thank you. That's all I had, Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tuzinski, do you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Traptan?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I do have some questions and some concerns about this. I mean, I appreciate, we have a 123-year-old home. I know the neighbors are concerned about it potentially being at risk. I understand with that, with the TNZ, that we're actually going to get a little more protection. I guess one of the things I'm wondering, this is to the applicant, around, what's the square footage of, I see 30% impervious with the, I'm guessing that's with the addition of the parking lot you're putting in the back? What's the square footage of that parking lot?
Oh, I show the footprint of the building around 1,100 square foot, and then the parking lot around 4,200 square foot.
Okay. So have you guys talked to the neighbor behind you at all? I mean, they're going to have a parking lot next to their house.
David has. So the landowner has talked to them, I think, a couple of times through the process.
Yeah, what, I mean, do they have any feedback, sir? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Difficult question to answer because I don't want to put words in someone else's mouth, but to convey, the same gentleman that is behind on Maple owns the brick house that's on Douglas, so he owns both of those. He operates those as rentals. He lives in one and rents out half of it, and then the other one has like three units inside of it. When I mentioned to him that we were buying the home, what our intentions were, he was very excited about it because he actually has been trying and courting some people to do a similar thing, maybe get a dentist's office or a doctor's office or something in one of those properties that he owns. So I know that he is really excited about doing the transitional because it maintains that house, and he used to own that home. So before we bought it, I think 20 years ago, he lived in it. So again, he didn't come to the meeting, but I've talked to him a dozen times in the yard, things like that, and he's pretty excited about it. No concerns about the driveway, traffic, anything like that. In fact, his only concern was where to put the driveway, and the fact that it's coming in off Maple makes the most sense because it's really hard to get in and out of Douglas. So it's nice that this is a corner lot and it's able to accommodate that.
Okay. What about fencing? I, you mentioned landscaping. Is there a fence on that back line?
There's a fence that goes around part of the yard now, which will all come down when it gets re-landscaped. The, let me, let me have him answer that.
Go ahead. I can have a drawing shown, isn't it?
Yeah, there is a-
I guess my concern with the, I mean-
Because of the barrier and the change in zone, when you have a parking lot next to a residential home, where this green line is of bushes on the left side, since there's going to be cars head in and that home is-
Right now, in the backyard, there's just a fence that comes off the deck that runs along the backside back to the-
Corner of the garage.
-detached garage. And so what we've done so far is put the screening of the shrubs right in there, and then David's had conversations of thinking about just installing a fence along that property line, but we don't currently show that in this plan set. It wasn't required, but we think that that may be something we'll install.
The, the question is whether it's required or whether it's just courtesy, mainly because that's for probably noise and lights. Well, if the property's not used at night, it shouldn't really be an issue, but if noise is an issue, then there has to be some way to accommodate the neighbors. But it's not an outside business, so it's kind of 50/50.
I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do to require a fence on that line. I think it would be best practice as a neighborly thing to do. If it was me in the house, and I understand it's going to be renters, which, you know, is transitional living usually, you know, they may not as care as much, but I think it would be a nice addition to put a fence on that line, so.
Question I would say is with advice from what the city recommends, if it should be something that looks like a residential fence, so for example, a four-foot picket fence that would be over the head of the car, or if it needs to be a six-foot-
A six-foot, yeah.
-white vinyl fence, the entire length of the property. As you understand, one may seem better, but then defeat the purpose of the residential aesthetic. So, but I do know that there's some different versions of that on other properties in, in that area, if you guys drive around, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that. Did you, did you guys have any conversations with the downtown Main Street organization? I mean, they kind of oversee the overlay for the district.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we did have any conversations through the process.
I was just curious if they had an opinion on this as well, since it's in their, kind of the downtown district area?
Yep. I honestly didn't even think about that, but no, we did not ask.
Okay. And the other question I have is on the lift you're proposing, is that, and so there's not a ramp because you have the 12-1 standard or whatever?
Yeah, so what we've identified in this that seemed like a better option is that we have created a flat sidewalk area and then have a mechanical lift that sits in the corner of the-
Like one of those chair lifts that fall down?
So it'd be more like you'd drive into, said, if you had a wheelchair you'd sit into, and it would just do the mechanical, like an elevator. But it, again, the likelihood in use is going to be very minimal, but it felt like it was something to put in from an ADA access standpoint versus the alternative of trying to create some kind of a ramping system that zigzagged back and forth to defeat the front, or, you know, architectural style. The plan was is that that was the most minimal impact and would serve the purpose of getting an ADA access to the site.
Okay. So is there going to be the ability, are you doing ADA modifications inside the home? I know this is probably a little bit outside of our-
Yeah, there are some minor modifications to the interior of the home to make some of the spaces ADA compatible.
Like for a wheelchair? Because in a 123-year-old home, I don't think they had as wide of corridors and doors.
Pretty open floor plan on this one and where clients would be. The large open doorways, things like that. We are modifying one restroom to accommodate ADA.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you. And then, did you guys actually have a conversation with Matthews or the neighbors over there? I mean, I appreciate their concerns about this. It sounds like we've kind of addressed some of that, but-
No, and, and absolutely will. After this meeting, we'll reach out. Like I say, we reached out and notified everybody had our neighborhood meeting, and nobody showed up until this point. So we understand the notification pieces, so yeah, so we'll certainly get them a card and we'll have some more conversations to see if there's any more conversations to have, for sure.
Great. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Lovelace?
Couple of quick ones for the applicant. So can you kind of run me through what the storm detention basin is that we have that you guys are adding into this one?
Sure. So it'll be like a, an infiltration-type basin? So it's going to be a basin that'll serve as a water quality as well as stormwater controls because as the water drains, there's kind of a ridge at Maple and Douglas as you go kind of to the east and downtown. That'll be part of the Douglas Street improvements. This site, though, drains kind of to the south and west, or north and west, I guess technically, towards the railroad area. And so the infiltration basin will actually promote infiltration of some of the lower-volume storms into the groundwater versus just detaining and releasing. So it'll help to reduce some of that volume. But what it is, is there's no existing below-grade stormwater to the west, so it's something similar to what we've done in a couple residential projects in downtown Lee Summit, as well as a couple of commercial projects in downtown, just to serve as a reduction in volume from the stormwater.
Is it, is it not just a dry basin that's there that's cut down?
It's dry, but you'll fill the bottom portion of it with rock, so it promotes an infiltration system to go down to and creates a chamber that allows a certain volume of water to store and then infiltrate through our slow, slow-draining-
I like that better. I, I think in the, in the report it said earthen, so that's, is that the description of it?
So it is earthen on the exterior. So the exterior would be an earthen berm that would be landscaped. You know, on the outside of it, you typically put some kind of native-type plants that are more water-loving, and then you can, but the interior portion of it will be a drain chamber with rock.
Okay. That sounds good. And then the only other question that I had was, I think, based on the staff report, we're a little bit overparked as far as what we require, and frankly, I mean, it's, my opinion, that's the owner's prerogative, but at the same time, I wanted to hear a little bit of thoughts on why that is.
It became just a program of trying to figure out where to reduce it. It was one of those ones that as we came in and had the drive aisle there, the parking stalls could be, you know, could be on one side only, but then at that point, you're very easily getting some additional- could be on one side only, but then at that point, you're very easily getting some additional parking on that backside of it. Again, just the idea if he has him, his wife, one of his workers and a client, now you're at four, it just allowed a little more opportunity to flexibility on the site. It wasn't as big of an impact.
Capturing all that water from the storm detention, and you guys did a study to that effect, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Frazier?
I think most of my questions have been addressed. One in particular, I don't, for the, I didn't hear specifically, we talked about fence. Is there anticipation that there would be a gate off of the front? And where I'm going with this is considering everything that's going on now and even downtown days and that sort of thing, parking for the general public and that sort of thing.
I think the fence that we're discussing would be just a property-lined fence between the properties over here, so there would be no gate. It would just be able to create a separation between the two uses. But as David kind of mentioned, what we've struggled with is what that fence wants to be, because we don't think a vinyl six-foot is appropriate. We don't know that a wood six-foot really feels appropriate, so we've been kind of messing with that discussion. And so that's why we installed a continuous row of evergreens shrubs that are on kind of a berm that we thought might satisfy that piece of it, but we thought that may be a continuation. But no, there'll be no gate across the parking lot. There'll be no gate kind of that locks it off. It'll be open to the world.
Okay, and then I think the other ADA compliance internally, I think you address, because if, looking at the pictures, I think it's two stories, right?
It is two stories. Yes, it is a two-story structure.
So I didn't know if you were planning on, at least at some point in the future, conducting business upstairs, and if that's the case, then of course it would have to be.
I think operationally, I think the intent, the owner could speak to that. I don't think the intent is to have any use up there other than an office for him and his wife or...
And I understand it's an older home.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will close public hearing and I'll go on to the commission for comments or a vote. So I'll start with you, Commissioner Frazier.
I don't have any further comments other than what I've already addressed. And I like the fact that we can still protect, if you would.
Hello, sorry, we couldn't, I think your microphone turned off a little bit towards the end there.
Just be not talking.
Just wanted to make sure we capture all your wonderful comments. Thank you.
I just said that I, no further comments, I just liked that I had already addressed, and I like the fact that with TNZ, we can hopefully provide some additional protections for the neighborhood.
All right, Commissioner Trafton?
Yeah, I, you know, to me, it's a little sad. We're converting an 100-year-old home into an office. I appreciate the owner's attention to protecting the home and the look, but I also know that TNZ zoning probably would afford it more protections, and I understand that now, so thank you. You know, so I am torn a little about supporting it or not. And so I guess I'm still kind of waffling between the two, so thank you.
Commissioner Tuzinski?
Thank you, ma'am Chairman. Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity here, and I respect Commissioner Trafton a lot, but I think this, the opportunity of this being a business allows the business to bear the expense of an old home and to keep it painted and updated and the wood floors on the inside or whatever. I hope, and I hope that, and it sounds like from the owner that he is very passionate about the home and that he will maintain it. And I'm glad to see it being used for, you know, others can come in and see it and share with him. So I think there's pros and cons to each. I do like the TNZ. I think that's going to allow more protections. It may not, it may not be able to forever be this home, and at some point, it may be demolished and reconstructed, but at least if it is demolished, reconstructed, it'll be in the intent of the neighborhood and what's around. So I think that's some good opportunities there. I plan on supporting this. Thank you.
Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I too think this is a great project. If we look around the downtown area, some of these office conversions are some of the best-up kept properties and look nicest close to downtown. So I like the fact that the owner's reached out to the neighbors and knows the history of the site. I like the modifications to the landscape. I think it's a great project and I plan to support it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Well, I'm glad that the applicant is willing to talk to the Matthews after we take our vote so that everyone can understand what's going to go on in the future should all of this pass. And so I guess with that, we will go ahead and ask for a motion on this application.
Chair?
Yes?
I move to recommend approval of application PL 252025019, rezoning from R1 to TNZ and preliminary development plan 100 Northeast Douglas Street, Engineering Solutions LLC applicant.
Second?
Can we get a vote on that, please?
Sherri Frazier?
Yes.
Jake Lovelace?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
No.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
The motion has passed and we will move on to the next hearing. All right, we have application PL 2025020, rezoning from AG to R1, 1548 Northeast Woods Chapel Road, Engineering Solutions LLC applicant. All those who are planning to give testimony or speak on behalf of this application, stand up and be sworn in at this time. All right, Mr. Slush?
All right, Matt Slush, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. And with me this evening, I have Dan Bromley, who is the landowner, the reason of the application. So we now are up on Woods Chapel, east of 470. Dan and his family has owned a piece of ground that sits to the west of Savannah Ridge. This is Park Ridge, so kind of as you're getting your bearings of Lakewood Way. Currently, there are two parcels that are in there, one zoned residential and one zoned agricultural. So on the Ignite Comp Plan or Master Plan, it's this area up in here in this R1-zoned area. There are the two parcels, the existing one of 1540 Woods Chapel, which is the southerly R1 piece, already rezoned some time ago to build a residential house, and then the agricultural 1548 Woods Chapel, which has a residential house on it. Our proposal is to change the agricultural zoning on this piece to residential simply to move the lot line between the two for the purposes of selling the northerly piece. So this is the existing house that is sitting on the agricultural piece, and its current lot line extends down into this kind of white and blue hatched area. And what we proposed to do was to change the lot line in that area, which created a parcel that is less than 10 acres, requiring the zoning to go from agricultural to R1, which would match the R1 zoning district of the existing single-family down here. We had a neighborhood meeting, and we had a number of the neighbors from Savannah Ridge, mainly the adjacent owners concerned that this change in zoning was for the purposes of development. Dan explained that it is simply for the purposes of selling that northerly property and because of the fact that there will be a single point of access for both parcels that exist today that will be utilized for both parcels, it limits the opportunity for doing any development and essentially the purposes of the rezoning is simply to allow that change in lot line. So I think we've resolved all the concerns. I don't see any of them here this evening, but that was their, their primary discussion was just their concern that the rezoning was for the purposes of development. So with that, Dan or I are here for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ian Trefferan, Planner. I'd like to begin by entering into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 13.
Exhibit A, 1 through 13 noted and entered into the record.
Perfect, thank you. So this evening, I'm presenting application PL 2025-020, a rezoning application for 1548 Northeast Woods Chapel Road. The applicant's requesting a rezoning of approximately 9.59 acres of land from the AG Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District in order to facilitate a future lot line adjustment. The future lot line adjustment would result in the property currently known as 1548 to fall beneath the 10-acre minimum for the agricultural zoning district. So in order to create two equal legal lots under the current zoning designations, or sorry, under the proposed zoning case, in order to create two legal lots, the zoning district has to be changed to R1 to accommodate a smaller lot size. The property is currently zoned Ag and is abutted by R1 Single Family Residential to the northwest and south, as well as agricultural to the south and east. There is a duplex, triplex, and higher-density single-family residential development across Northeast Woods Chapel to the east, zoned RP3 as well. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan designates this property as Residential 1, so that's our single-family residential future land use designation. So the proposed zoning district does comply and match the future land use designation. So the application's request does meet the standards of the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and is something that we would support because of that. The applicant is also requesting a modification to Section 6.1350-F1 of the UDO, which pertains to detached garage or storage/shed structure count maximums for accessory buildings. The requirement under the R1 zoning district is a maximum of one detached garage or storage/shed structure. The property currently has three of those on it right now, marked out with the red stars. There are no new proposed accessory structures with this. This is just to accommodate the existing structures in the property. Collectively, the square footage of all of those detached structures falls beneath the maximum size limit already proposed or underneath the R1 zoning district, so it's not creating a nonconformity in terms of size necessarily, just count. So because of that, staff is supportive of a modification request in this instance because the agricultural zoning district is actually more permissive in the count and size of accessory structures than the R1 is. So by doing the rezoning and granting the modification, it's limiting the further creation of accessory structures. A neighborhood information meeting was held on February 17, 2025, where six members of the public attended. Discussion was primarily focused over concerns for future development due to the zoning change to R1 and changes to existing buildings. Staff has not received any written comments in favor or in opposition to this project. So with that, staff is recommending approval, and with the condition of approval listed here, the application will meet the standards of the Ignite Comprehensive Plan, and like I said, staff recommends approval. I'll ask them for any questions.
Thank you. All right, I'll start with Commissioner Frazier with any questions you may have. Oh, wait, I forgot to see if there are any public comments. None? Okay, we'll start with you. I mean, you said you don't have any, so, okay. Commissioner Lovelace? Nope. Commissioner Trafton? Okay. Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. One question, of course. This currently has a shared drive entry. How is that going to be handled when you split the lot or reorganize the lot sizes?
So we'll do an access easement across that front entry, and so Dan has started working in hopes that we would get there. So right now, the drive kind of comes in and goes up and shares and works its way around. The idea is that we'll create an access easement that will split the drives here, and he'll create a new drive that will come more along his properties that will separate it directly at the front port of the near Woods Chapel. So an access easement that both will maintain, and then both will still have the one access point.
So we're going to maintain one connection?
Yeah, one connection to Woods Chapel is all that we're going to get, and then we'll split it after we get onto the property. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Trafton?
Yeah, I did have a question about that. Is that a lake or pond on there that looks like you guys split in half or something? Is that just so that both parties could have access to that?
It is a body of water. It's difficult to say it's a lake. I think Dan would agree. It's a...
Well...
It's a, it is, so the purpose is of, there is an existing sanitary sewer manhole that sits right here, and Dan's house is served by it. When his dad lived there, obviously, the sewer line was okay, but now as we're fixing all the lines and putting the pieces together, we need to make sure his sewer line's appropriately on the right lot and everybody sits where they are. But there is a body of water back here. It will be split by the two parties and they'll manage.
Is it a lagoon or was it...
No, it's a pond. I mean, so the old farmhouse is this one that sat here for all of this before the Savannah Ridge development was there, and I believe that that pond's probably been there since that point. And the pond is essentially shallow and just has, needs some love to get it back to better shape, but it's just got algae, it's just got growth on it that, you know, it's just not a huge area of water body to deal with. So it's not a lagoon, it's just it's a pond, but there's just not a lot of water feeding to it that would contribute to its health at this point.
So the rationale is just to give both parties access to it instead of one taking full ownership of it?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
I have one question for staff. Ian, I understand the three structures have been there, and so really, we're just allowing what's already happened, but when a modification is being made to allow something like that, what keeps an applicant from keeping three structures but changing those structures or putting new ones up? I was just curious.
Yeah, so that's a good point. Under this proposed modification, they would be able to tear down and rebuild. I mean, the standard for maximum size is still in place, so they can't go beyond that, but it does establish the maximum of three going forward. So the purpose is to prevent creating a legal nonconforming situation where they might have three structures but aren't technically allowed to do so. But you're correct, they would be able to tear down and rebuild in place.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I don't know that we probably even have any comments, do we? We want to just go ahead and get a motion to vote? Oh, I guess we need to close public hearing first, and then, I guess I'm looking for a motion. Okay, Commissioner Frazier?
I move to recommend approval of application PL 2025-2-020, rezoning from AG, Ag to R1, 1548 northeast Woods Chapel Road, Engineering Solutions LLC applicant.
Second?
All right, can we get a vote on this, please?
Sherri Frazier?
Yes.
Jake Lovelace?
Uh, yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
All right, the motion has passed. I guess what I'm going to have to do is assign people to do motions again, huh? Everybody's fighting over them up here. So do we have any roundtable tonight? Did you say yeah? I couldn't tell.
I do not have any.
Oh, okay. Ms. Nastef has something.
I have one if nobody else does.
Okay.
Just a quick reminder, joint meeting with the City Council on April 22.
Okay, okay, I didn't know that, so...
Can you guys send out a calendar? Yeah.
Yep, we can definitely do that.
What time is that? The five, six? Okay. Okay, and Mr. Benbrook, I think you had something?
Yes, kind of a question. One of my neighbors approached me the other day, said he had requested a streetlight at the court that adjoins our street. They, he was referred to, or he was told that... They, he was referred to or he was told that they would send a request to KC PNO and I'm not sure how accurate that statement is, but I was curious, what is our part when it comes to acquiring additional street?
Susan Mary, City Traffic Engineer. So when we do get a request, we look into does the existing lighting in the area meet our policy or is an additional light required? Just because it's requested doesn't mean that we allow it. Typically, we have the lights at each intersection and then at one at each cul-de-sac or if there's a stretch that's, I think, 1,000, we'll put another light in the middle of that 1,000 foot stretch. And so when we get a request, we would look at that and determine whether or not another light is warranted. If it is, we do send the request to Evergy. It can take up to eight months for them to put that light in.
So if it's been over a year, he should follow up?
He should follow up and we can reach out to Evergy. There's been some miscommunication and some things got lost and so, yes, he can certainly reach out and we will follow up on that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 5:57 PM.